Please rise for the pleasure of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll coffee. Councilmember Irving.
Here.
Councilmember Paige. Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember Brad.
Present.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Trakus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a forum.
The approval of the adjournals for the November 13th and 16th meeting are being finalized. So we want to do an approval of journal this evening. So we have no bid openings this evening. We'll move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, and road and bridge matters this evening, so move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Second District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number three, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as requested.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 12, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, Third and Seventh Districts. Receive, file, contract in amount not to exceed $1,153,600. Be approved and ordered to NB West Contracting Company, Inc. The lowest responses bitter as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, First District.
Please hold on the order of business.
Item number 15, First District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the City of University City. And, I'm sorry, and that will be the order.
Item number 16, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 17, Second District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
We have one add-on this evening, Madam Chair. Item number one, First District.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. County Executive, any report?
No report today. Nothing further.
Um, reporter's, that's what it is.
He's holding the order of business.
Okay, thank you. Public forum, we have eight speakers. Please come forward, state your name, and you will have three minutes to make your comments. First speaker this evening is Carl Becker.
My name is Associate County Counselor Carl Becker, right here at 41 South Central. I'm here again this afternoon to speak to the council about the public safety record of the county councilor's office. Once again, some of my colleagues are not able to be here because of court obligations and other legal deadlines. Last week, I spoke to you about how our office renders comprehensive legal services to those departments that the council has already recognized as contributing to public safety: the Police Department, Department of Justice Services, Municipal Court, and the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Again, it is important to note that the council appropriated Proposition P funds for the Municipal Court public defenders, thus it is appropriate that the office which prosecutes in Municipal Court also be considered public safety employees. Last week, I spoke about the Mental Health Court and public safety, and how we work with those charged with a crime who are mentally ill. I said that I was very proud of the fact that the state and federal courts have modeled their mental health courts after the ones developed by the county councilor's office. I think that's something we can all be proud of in St. Louis County. I would add this week that the county councilor's office also provides other legal services in regard to public safety, such as addressing dangerous problem properties, representing the family court, including the detention arm of the family court, representing Regis, which renders the computer services for law enforcement in St. Louis County. We also provide other more mundane services, such as contract preparation and review for the Police Department, Department of Justice Services, Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and the Municipal Court. We have also rendered legal advice and assistance with respect to the county police department's CALEA certification. CALEA is a certification that is only granted to the elite law enforcement agencies, and their website says it all: CALEA, the gold standard in public safety. We also represent the county in habeas corpus matters. I direct the council's attention to the Charter, Section 7.010, which provides for the principle of equal pay for substantially equal work, and that it will be followed. Our office provides substantially equal work as the prosecuting attorney's office, and we should be compensated accordingly. Last week, one of the speakers up here referenced minority hiring, and how it appeared that the county councilor's office was underrepresented with respect to minority hiring. It is not, for lack of effort. We network to attract minority attorneys. We, for example, we give notice to the Mound City Bar Association of job openings. The bottom line is, our office doesn't pay enough to attract and keep minority lawyers. I'm disappointed that many African-American lawyers have left our office, but I am also pleased some lawyers have gone on to other public service. For example, former Assistant County Counselors Renee Harden-Tammons and Sandra Hemphill are now judges across the street. Dr. Phil Boyd, a former Assistant County Counselor, is an assistant superintendent at a large school district in the area, and Steve Harmon became legal counsel to yet another large school district. Other African-American lawyers in our office have left for higher pay elsewhere. We simply cannot presently compete with the market, but that can change if we are appropriately recognized as public safety employees. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andy Brawman.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Andy Brawman. I'm an Assistant County Counselor with the county councilor's office, and I'm here again to speak about the public safety record of our office. I've been with the office for just under one year, and I also interned with the office while I was in law school. I love working in this office, and I take tremendous pride in all that we do for the county. The lion's share of my work with the office is as a municipal prosecutor. I prosecute twice a week in our South County and North County Satellite Courts. Our office prosecutes a litany of ordinance violations, including high speeds over 100 miles per hour, petty larceny, assault, domestic violence, animal abuse, sexual misconduct, including cases where a teacher groped his student, and another where a man was seated in his car parked within view of an elementary school with his genitals exposed. We also prosecute first two DWIs and increasingly third DWIs. And I'd like to take a second to clarify something that was said last week. It was said that the PA's office prosecutes third county ordinance violations when it comes to DWIs. The PA's office does not prosecute any ordinance violations, only state statutes. Our office, traditionally, our office prosecutes a defendant's first two DWIs charged under the county ordinance, and then third and subsequent DWIs are sent to the PA's office for state statute, to be issued under a state statute. Increasingly, however, we are also issuing those third DWIs and prosecuting them under the county ordinance. Lastly, we also prosecute drug paraphernalia cases, where defendants are found in possession of needles or syringes for injecting heroin or methamphetamine. As you surely know, our county, or our whole country is facing an opioid epidemic, and in our region, that epidemic is concentrated in South County. I prosecute three, four, sometimes five needle cases every week. Just last week, just last week, I was unable to be here to speak while my colleagues were speaking, because I was prosecuting a child endangerment case where the defendant overdosed on heroin while he was watching his seven-year-old stepson. I'm proud to say that the defendant agreed to a plea deal whereby he was placed on a two-year probation with mandatory inpatient, 90-day inpatient treatment, mandatory outpatient treatment, upon completion of that, mandatory Narcotics Anonymous attendance, twice weekly, random drug testing by the County Division of Justice Services, and mandatory welfare checks and supervision by Division of Family Services. Our court does a lot to combat, we're the first line of the fight against opioids in the St. Louis region. I take great pride in my work as a servant of the people of St. Louis County. It's the very reason I went to law school in the first place. Contributing to the public safety of St. Louis County is an important function of the county councilor's office, and I hope that you will help us continue to do just that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lorena Merkin-Van Canel.
May I begin? Thank you. Good afternoon, esteemed members of the county council, county executive, county counselor. Thank you for having me today. My name is Lorena Merkin-Van Canel. I'm an attorney in the county councilor's office, 17 years. I have served under three county executives, two county counselors, and many county council members, and I, it's the job of my life. You've heard a lot already about how our office is an integral part of the policing and public safety work that the county does. It is extensive, and you'll hear from more of my colleagues. In addition to the work I do to advising the recognized departments of public safety, the Police Department, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and Department of Justice Service, I actually also teach at the Police Academy. So I'm, I'm teaching police officers that will get on the streets, or that are going to provide supervisory services if they're not already there. In addition to that, I represent the department, the Police Department, and the Prosecuting Attorney's Office when they get sued with respect to the sex offender registry. The sex offender registry, as you know, all sex offenders in the state of Missouri must register with the local law enforcement, and then that pool of information goes into the state database, the sex offender registry, that's available to all citizens to make, to make their choices. As you know, the sex offenders represent a very dangerous recidivist population. The United States Supreme Court, Emickun versus Lyle, has called them a serious threat to our nation. More than one court has recognized them as having a high recidivism rate, and, more importantly, they are, pose a very real and big danger to our population. The registry, the sex offender registry, is an important tool that Missourians, Countians can use, they keep, to keep themselves and their children safe. It is, it is through this transparent, accurate, and complete registry that the public and law enforcement, the Police Department, can track these sex offenders, and it is with such vital information, the Countians can make some of the most important decisions that they make in their lives: where they're going to live, where they're going to work, where their kids can play, and even where their kids can go trick-or-treating at night, because you can use the registry to make those decisions. Our office counsels, advises, and represents the Police Department to fulfill this important public safety mission: to register every sex offender and keep them on the registration. The Police Department and the Prosecuting Attorney's Office are sued very often, exceedingly litigious population. We have many cases, some recent examples. So these are sex offenders that are either trying to not register, or get off the registration because they don't want to be on this public registration system for the state. Recent examples include a pastor who forced his little camper to take off her clothes and sexually touched her, a teacher in a local high school that surreptitiously videotaped his high school, female high school student's private parts, and a sodomist, a twice convicted sodomist, of his two-year-old daughter and his four-year-old stepson. And these are the people that are suing to get off this registry, and we, our office, the work we do is to keep those offenders back on the list. We work with, I'm sorry?
Yeah, just bring your comments.
Okay. We work in other areas with respect to sex offenders and other statutes that, that control them, and we continue to advise the Police Department on recent changes. My cases and work are replete with public safety implications, and the work my office does, and we improve policing, and we carry out this public mission that you all expect of us, and I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the courtesy.
Next speaker is Cindy Homan.
Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Homan. My address is 41 South Central. For the past 27 years, I have served as an attorney for St. Louis County. I am currently an Associate County Counselor. My colleagues have already spoken about the vital role that our office plays in to enable our police officer, to, police department, to protect lives and property throughout St. Louis County. I'd like to focus on the work that we do for the Emergency Communications Commission. The commission is a coordinated council of leaders from fire and police agencies and local governments. They're responsible for the system that provides interoperable radio communications that allow first responders to better manage incidents by sharing vital information in a rapid fashion. The commission is also responsible for upgrading our emergency 911 system and our emergency warning system. Since day one, the county councilor's office has done all the legal work for the commission. For example, our office provides legal review of every policy adopted by the commission, and every contract that they need to carry out their mission. This includes the issuance of special obligation bonds in April 2010. That was needed to be able to fund our emergency radio system and the other two systems that I spoke about. It also includes contracts for site acquisition, construction, and maintenance of the emergency warning system, as well as the towers for our interoperable radio system. We also were involved in the procurement process for the construction contract for the Emergency Communications Center. We participate in drafting regional contracts. We have contracts with Eastway Gateway, the city of St. Louis, St. Charles County, Jefferson County, and other counties to facilitate interoperable radio communications throughout the entire metropolitan region. We drafted the contracts for all the user groups for our radio system. This includes agreements with the Missouri Highway Patrol, the FBI, municipalities, fire districts, hospitals, universities, and many others. We provide all the day-to-day legal advice concerning compliance with state and federal laws, including the FCC regulations, compliance with county ordinances such as the purchasing code. We also handle all the litigation for the Emergency Communications Commission. They have been sued twice since their creation, both times trying to stop them from building radio system towers, and we were successful in both cases. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next speaker is George Huber.
Not exactly suited up for the occasion, but was told to wear green. My name is George Huber. I'm resident of Afton, Missouri, and I'm here to represent residents of Afton in relation to the building of homes on what was formerly Tower T Golf Course. There's a number of concerns. I understand that there have been individuals here previously that have expounded on a number of the issues we have. One of my big concerns is the fact that with the clay that's been removed on the grounds that we're speaking of, that they will have to blast bedrock to build these homes. I just recently had some waterproofing done on my home residence, and I'm a little scared that while this waterproofing's working just fine, that if there's going to be some dynamite blasting done not that far from our residence, that this could affect not only my residents, but others also. The traffic that this will create on Higgy Road, and probably what modifications of Higgy Road that'll be required, is, the little two-lane road is already a nightmare. I can't imagine what it's going to be like with all these homes back in there. You know, I realize that this corporation that is anticipating building these homes is going to provide residence for people seeking the homes to live in, but, you know, it's all, it's about profit, you know, they will profit from this. But I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that how do we put a price on the joy that young kids get from learning how to hit a softball, or a baseball, or a golf ball? And a golf ball, they may take on a sport that they'll be able to enjoy the rest of their life. These are things that you can't put a price on, and things that were taken away. Now, I realize the people that ran the golf establishment there decided to get out of it, but I understand there are some options on the plate that might be pursued in this respect. This is like an oasis in the middle of Afton, where we have wildlife. I can't tell you what a joy I see on my wife's face. She comes in from her morning walk, she says, "I saw a couple deer, I saw a turkey, I saw that rascally raccoon running around," you know? All this wildlife will be drove off too, and I think that's something, you know, exposure to that, once again, you can't put a price on that. And I was glad that I was contacted and had a chance to come before you today. I appreciate it. Time's up, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nauman Waddalawala.
Good afternoon. Nauman Waddalawala, Assistant County Counselor, 41 South Central. Members of the council, I've been with the county councilor's office since February of 2016, and when I joined this office, I specifically remember telling my wife and parents about six months after I'd started, that I could see myself retiring with this office. Unfortunately, over time, I came to realize that raises, promotions were just not something frequent in this office, and so I decided to explore my options. And when I did that, it was a bittersweet moment, because I'd be sad to be leaving such great attorneys that work at this office, and all the people that I've, you know, just dealt with at the county. It's been a wonderful experience, but now, of course, the sweet part will be that I'll be taking my talents to the United States Attorney's Office at the Eastern District of Missouri. And so I point that out, because this office has a great reputation. To go from this office to the US Attorney's Office was a surprising move when they made the offer, but I came to realize that it's because this office has that reputation in the community. And so the natural question becomes, why are you here today if you're leaving? So my last day is tomorrow, and the reason I'm here is because it's a matter of principle. I really do feel that this office, on a daily basis, deals with public safety work. And so it's for that reason that even though I will not personally be benefiting if the council decides to apportion the appropriate prop P money to the office, it's because it's a matter of principle that I really do believe that the attorneys and staff members in that office do deal with public safety day in and day out. And specifically, I wanted to talk about the domestic violence docket that we have in St. Louis County. So I've been a prosecutor in the West, North, and South Division in the, almost three years that I've been at the office, and we have a dedicated domestic violence docket each month. And so I've dealt with those cases frequently, and in the short time that I've left, I just wanted to talk about one case in particular that, that still stuck, it's stuck with me till this day. It was about six months after I'd started, and what happens is that we have police officers who will submit a police report, we look through those reports, and we decide whether or not we want to issue those charges. And this was a case where, in reading it, it looked like a run-of-the-mill domestic violence case, where a husband had, you know, truly attacked his wife. And so after I'd issued those charges, a letter goes out to the victim, and it advises the victim that I'll be prosecuting this case, I would appreciate your cooperation, please contact, contact me. Here's the contact information for the victim advocates, for you to, you know, be taken care of, and any concerns that you have, they will address them. She called me about a month after, and she had said, "Sir, I would like to meet with you. I have pictures and medical bills that I want you to look at." So I brought her into the office, met with her, she gave me the pictures. Let me tell you, it's one thing when you read someone getting struck by another individual, it's another thing when you actually see visible pictures of bruised eyes, a busted lip, broken nose, and so I'd just like to wrap up by saying that at the very end, when we concluded the case, when the individual took two years probation, had to do numerous programs, she called three months after, crying on the phone, saying, "Thank you for taking care of this case. Thank you for doing something that no other office has done," because this wasn't the first time that he had been in trouble with the law. And she said that I feel completely safe to be around my husband, he's a changed man, and so with that, I'd just like to conclude and say that this isn't a rare instance, it happens on a frequent basis, daily basis, that we deal with, and so I'd like to thank you all for a wonderful experience with the county, and if there's any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer them if I could.
I want to thank you, sir, for your service. I've come to know you a bit in the last two years. You're a fine man.
Thank you.
A fine attorney. It's truly a loss to the county councilor's office to see you go, but I wish you every success at the US Attorney's Office, because I'm sure you'll be successful there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Trakus. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next speaker is Stanley Brown.
Can you open the microphone now?
Yes. 41 Hawthorne Estates, Town and Country, Missouri. I'm here representing the St. Louis County Commission on Disabilities, and with me is one person, but she's very adamant as a disabled son, so just your mind's eye, multiply her by 20 or 30. Also, I'm president of the Gateway Chapter, which is Missouri's chapter, of Paralyzed Veterans of America. I was paralyzed 21 years ago on active duty. But half of those two organizations, and myself, I strongly urge your support of including this full-time ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator in our budget now to be with St. Louis County. I want to thank Councilman Trakus for bringing this forward, County Executive Stinger, who I think supports this, and the council for hearing it again. I've been advocating at the national level and local for about 21 years since my injury. I am convinced with a full-time coordinator, St. Louis County will be more accessible and a better place to live for St. Louis County residents with disabilities. City of St. Louis has a full-time coordinator. Recently, with the arch redesign and the Soldiers Memorial, that coordinator got together a diverse group of disability people with the organizations. We met several times, and those two institutions are very user-friendly. Contrast the expansion of the St. Louis County recent court, done completely without any input from disability groups, in spite of the Disability Commission trying to get involved. Now, the county says it meets minimum requirements. I would question that. I'd also think, I can't really get the front door by myself. I don't have use of my hands, and the buttons on the side of the building at the elbow, go around the door, get inside, go to another corner, elbow again, go around another door, get inside. If it had contacted us ahead of time, we'd have said, "Put a faceplate outside that I can hit." With a full-time coordinator in the county, that person could get involved with the early projects, parks, buildings, and then get those designs to our commission to look at. So, thank you for your time, and I'd urge your support of including this position.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Stanley.
and a better place to live for St. Louis County residents with disabilities. City of St. Louis has a full-time coordinator. Recently, with the arch redesign and the Soldiers Memorial, that coordinator got together the first group of disability people, the organizations. We met several times, and those two institutions are very user-friendly. Contrast the expansion of the St. Louis County recent court, done completely without any input from disability groups, in spite of the Disability Commission trying to get involved. Now, the county says it meets minimum requirements. I would question that. I'd also think I can't really get the front door by myself. I don't have use of my hands, and the buttons on the side of the building at the elbow, go around the door, get inside, go to another corner, elbow again, go around another door, get inside. If they had contacted us ahead of time, we'd have said, "Put a faceplate outside that I can hit." With a full-time coordinator in the county, that person could get involved with the early projects, parks, buildings, and then get those designs to our commission to look at. So thank you for your time, and I'd urge your support of including this position.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Stanley.
Our final speaker this afternoon is going to be Brittany Blasingame.
Hello, my name is Brittany Blasingame, and I'm a senior at Maryville University in the Forensic Psychology and Criminal Justice Program. Over the summer, I had the pleasure of interning with Step Up of St. Louis, which is a nonprofit drug prevention organization. One of the major issues we tried to tackle this summer is the rising trend of e-cigarettes in our school systems. What these rising trends have become the new phenomenon of the Juul, which was created to help adults with smoking addictions. However, children as young as middle schoolers are developing nicotine addictions thanks to Juuls and vapes. Juuls tend to deliver a higher concentration of nicotine than any other e-cigarette, and multiple vapes are even able to hold THC and meth and other addictive substances. With the passing of Bill 270, it would make it illegal for anyone under the age of 21 to own a vape, e-cigarette, or Juul. As of right now, any student caught with one of these items are sent to Saturday School Systems, which will be starting in January. The passing of this bill would allow children and young adults to have more immediate consequences. Right now, there are no immediate repercussions of e-cigarettes use, and many students and young adults are unaware of the health risks that these devices pose on themselves, even though there is no research that e-cigarettes are a gateway drug. We believe it is a gateway situation, and without these immediate consequences, it allows young adults to become more curious about the harmful and addictive substances and open them up to more harmful situations. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. No more speakers, Madam Chair.
Introduction of bills.
Bill number 290, introduced by Councilmember Harder, in ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Burkle Electric LLC for temporary relocation of facilities of the 9/11 Backup Call Center, project number 17-29-B-OC. Bill number 291, introduced by Councilmember Harder, in ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Cardinal Environmental Operations Corporation for asbestos abatement at the 911 Backup Call Center, St. Louis County, project number 17-29-A-OC. Bill number 292, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, in ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Johnson Controls Bar Protection LP for installation of a nitrogen generator for the Court's garage drive pipe system. Bill number 293, introduced by Councilmembers Trakus and Harder, in ordinance amending Title 12 St. Louis County revised ordinance since 1974's amended traffic code by enacting and adding one provision to Schedule 2 and one provision to Schedule 9. Bill number 294, introduced by Councilmember Page, in ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with Dick and Kistner PC for legal services. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
I have questions. The legislation that I requested has an error. So should it, should we still introduce it and do a sub later? Well, that, which is the quickest way to do it? Or to go ahead and...
You can, I think it would be quicker if we just introduced it next week.
That's what I thought.
Is that the Transition Act, there is bill?
I don't know if we do a sub, then it has to be...
You can introduce it in next week, and then if you get everybody together, you can...
With the correction.
Right.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number 191, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Please hold.
Bill number 191 is held.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to hold Bill 202. Bill number 202 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 208, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Hold. Hold Bill number 208.
Bill number 208 is held.
Bill number 256, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to hold Bill number 256. Bill number 256 is held.
Bill number 258, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Okay, I'll hold Bill number 258.
Bill number 258 is held.
Bill number 269, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold Bill 269, and Bill 269 is held.
Bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember Wessinger for Councilmember Trakus.
I've heard from stakeholders that want to be heard. I think it's important. It's no doubt this is an important piece of legislation. I fully expect it to pass, but I do want to give all interested parties an opportunity to be heard. So with that, I move to hold Bill number 270.
Bill number 270 is held.
Bill number 272, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 272.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 272 is perfected.
Bill number 273, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 273.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 273 is perfected.
Bill number 274, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 274.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 274 is perfected.
Bill number 275, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 275.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 275 is perfected.
Bill number 276, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move to perfect Bill number 276. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 276 is perfected.
Bill number 277, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 277.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 277 is perfected.
Bill number 278, introduced by Councilmember Wessinger for Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect Bill number 278, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 278 is perfected.
Bill number 279, introduced by Councilmember Wessinger.
I move to perfect Bill number 279.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 279 is perfected.
Bill number 280, introduced by Councilmember Wessinger for Councilmember Trakus.
I move to perfect Bill number 280, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 280 is perfected.
Bill number 281, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 281.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 281 is perfected.
Bill number 282, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 282.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 282 is perfected.
Bill number 283, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 283.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 283 is perfected.
Bill number 284, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 284.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 284 is perfected.
Bill number 285, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 285.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 285 is perfected.
Bill number 286, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 286.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 286 is perfected.
Bill number 287, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 287.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 287 is perfected.
Bill number 288, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 288.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 288 is perfected.
Bill number 289, introduced by Councilmember Page, Walton Gray, and Wessinger for Councilmembers Trakus and Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 289.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bill number 289 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 353, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to hold Bill number 353 on the order of business. Bill number 353 is held.
Substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 249, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Trakus.
Give me a minute, please. I'm going to hold, move to hold Bill number 2, or substitute, substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 249, please.
Substitute Bill number 2, 249 is held.
Bill number 257, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 257.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 257, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 257 is finally passed.
Bill number 265, introduced by Councilmembers Page and Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of Bill number 265.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 265, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 265 is finally passed.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Page and Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of Bill number 266.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 266, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 266 is finally passed.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Excuse me, I move for final passage of Bill number 267.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 267, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 267 is finally passed.
Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of Bill number 268.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 268, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 268 is finally passed.
Bill number 271, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to hold Bill 271 on the order of business, and Bill 271 is held.
We have nothing under resolutions this evening, Madam Chair, so we'll move to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, item number 1, 3rd District. Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number 2, 1st District.
Hold on the order of business, please. And that will be the order.
Madam Chair, so that was, is that the one that was...
Yeah, that you got a substitute corrected letter, so that's why we were dropping this, so that the correct letter would be on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll just drop this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I move to drop this on the order of business.
Item number 3, 1st District.
Please hold on the order of business. So, and that will be the order.
Item number 4, 1st District.
Please drop from the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 5, 5th District.
I think we were going to schedule committee to hold on that. That was the request last week. I haven't heard anything about it.
For the retirement board?
Yes.
Sure.
We did say that, but I don't know who's responsible for it.
I don't know if it's been scheduled.
Who's responsible?
Did you say anything about that, Jim? We'll have to check that out.
Yeah, the chairman said it was his plan. He asked me if I was all right with it, I suggest, but I haven't heard anything since.
Okay, so we can ask him about setting a date.
Okay.
So for now...
Please hold.
Okay, so ordered.
And moving out to new business, Madam Chair, we have one prepared order this evening.
I would like to ask for the approval of order number 1.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Order number 1 is adopted.
Madam Chair, that order states that the agenda deadline for next week's meeting will be Monday at noon, so the agenda for next week will come out Monday afternoon because Friday is a holiday, so we can't...
Thanks, Jim. Any council members you have any comments?